Welcome to this further hearing of the Public Accountability Committee's inquiry into the integrity, efficacy and value for money for New South Wales Government Grants programmes. Before I commence, I'd like to acknowledge the Gadigal people, who are the traditional custodians of the land on which this parliament sits. And I'd also like to pay respects to those in our past, present and emerging, and all First Nations peoples who are either in the meeting or following on the webcast. This hearing is to be conducted virtually, which enables the work of the committee to continue notwithstanding the COVID epidemic. And it does not compromise the health and safety of members, witnesses or the secretariat who assist us. I do ask everyone's patience if there are any technical difficulties. And of course, if anybody loses connection, please just rejoin with a link that was provided to you initially by the secretariat. At today's hearing, we will consider, we will be receiving evidence from New South Wales Government agencies. We will be considering the manner in which New South Wales Government Grants programmes have been delivered. Of course, this is not only a matter of historical interest in relation to bushfire grants, but a matter of continuing interest, given the size and the number of grants programmes that are now being administered by the New South Wales Government, not least of which relate to the grants assistance in relation to the COVID pandemic. In that context, there has been a detailed audit of generals report, which sets out certain essential measures that need to be met to ensure the integrity of New South Wales Government Grants programmes. I would just like to make a few brief comments about today's procedures. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness. It's a matter this committee believes is essential and it's a resolution of the House. There may be some questions that a witness can only take on notice, in which case you're entitled to take it on notice and we seek an answer within 21 days. It is perfectly acceptable to provide an answer in less than 21 days. Today's proceedings are being streamed live and a transcript, of course, will be provided from Hansard as soon as possible. A few notes on virtual hearing etiquette. Could I ask people to speak clearly into the microphone and to identify if you're asking a question, which witness you'd like to take the question? And to identify if you're answering a question, to commence with providing your name so that Hansard can clearly record it. Could I ask everybody to please mute their microphones when they're not speaking? And of course, remember to turn your microphones on just before you commence to speak. It's a matter I will try and remember myself. Members and witnesses could please also avoid speaking over each other so we can all be heard clearly. And again, I do request members not to speak over each other until our one person to speak at a time. I now welcome our witnesses. Could each witness, and we might start with Mr Stephen Brady, please state your name, your position, title and take either an oath or an affirmation, a copy of which should have been provided to you by the secretariat. Mr Brady.
Thank you. Stephen Brady, Chief Operating Officer, Department of Customer Service. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thanks, Mr Brady. We might go to you now, Mr Reese.
Thank you. Damon Reese, Chief Executive Officer of Service New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Mr Reese. You are coming through very quietly, so if you could either speak up or be a little closer to the microphone, that would be of significant assistance. Mr Tui.
Hi, I'm Sam Tui. I'm the Director of Policy and Material Coordination at Resilience New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thanks, Mr Tui. Ms Punch.
Hello, my name's Lindal Punch, the Executive Director of Finance and Investment Delivery at Resilience New South Wales. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Look, thank you all for your attendance today. There is an opportunity, if you wish to avail yourselves of it, to make a brief opening statement. Do any of the witnesses wish to provide a brief opening statement?
Mr Shubridge, I would like to open with an opening statement.
Thanks, Ms Punch. We'll go to you.
Thank you. So as I mentioned, my name is Lindal Punch, the Executive Director of Finance and Investment Delivery at Resilience New South Wales. Sam, who's joined us today, has been with Resilience New South Wales and the former Office of Emergency Management for over 10 years. I however, have not been with you, I have only been with the organisation for only three and a half months and was not with the organisation when the bushfire grant programmes were designed and implemented. I was actually in the role of Chief Financial Officer at another agency in the sector at the time. My role at Resilience New South Wales is to lead and manage the government's disaster expenditure arrangements, policy, governance and investments to mitigate risk and improve community resilience to disasters. My portfolio assists with the coordination of New South Wales Government Grant programmes, designed for New South Wales community recipients for disaster response, recovery as well as preparedness activities. At Resilience New South Wales, we work with our key partners across the New South Wales Government, including local councils, NGOs, local communities and the Commonwealth to develop targeted programmes to help those impacted by a disaster. The consultation and approval process of disaster funded programmes is often extensive and may include administering agencies, the Commonwealth, New South Wales Treasury, subcommittees to the State Recovery Committee, the State Recovery Committee, as well as responsible ministers. I note that the Small Business Bushfire Grant Guidelines were led by the Commonwealth in consultation with not only the New South Wales Government, but also other jurisdictions to help respond and meet, and respond and meet the recovery needs at the time. The 2019-20 bushfire season lasted eight months with a total of 11,774 fire incidents throughout the season and more than 2,400 homes lost. As noted on many occasions, the season was unprecedented in its intensity and scale. To respond to the event's need for assistance, the Disaster Recovery Grant programmes were designed to appropriately balance the need to deliver urgent assistance to impacted communities quickly whilst ensuring the responsible expenditure of public monies. I note that with all disaster recovery grant programmes, monitoring and evaluation activities are very important to ensure the outcomes of the programmes are met and any risks and issues are readily identified and addressed. The lessons learned are then reflected and incorporated into our future programmes to help minimise risk and strengthen the finance, governance and controls framework. Lastly, programmes that are eligible under the Commonwealth Disaster Recovery Funding Arrangements also have an extensive audit and assurance programme. At Resilience New South Wales, we manage the disaster assistance under the Disaster Relief Fund and under the Shared Disaster Recovery Fund Arrangements with the Commonwealth. Thank you, Mr Shubridge.
Thanks very much, Ms Punch. Does any other witness wish to make a brief opening statement?
Mr Shubridge, I'll make an opening statement, thanks.
Thanks, Mr Reese.
Damon Reese, good morning, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before the committee today. Service New South Wales has been tasked by the New South Wales Government to deliver financial relief to communities impacted by bushfires, floods and COVID, beginning with the summer 2019-2020 bushfires. We have been paying grants and vouchers to our customers for approximately two years. In that time, we've supported the New South Wales community through paying out approximately $7 billion in partnership with New South Wales Treasury, Resilience New South Wales and Regional New South Wales. We're proud of the support that we delivered to get individuals, businesses and communities back up and running after these crises. And we'll continue to support our customers through the next phase of the New South Wales Government's response to the pandemic. We've worked hard to build our out payment systems that is responsible to our customers' partner agencies, leverages automation, data and technology, and importantly upholds the integrity of publicly funded programmes through strong fraud control. We've learned a lot and continually strengthened our systems since the 2019-20 bushfires. One of the challenges we've grappled with is how to deliver financial support to communities in crisis to ensure they receive much needed funds quickly, safely and efficiently whilst still preventing unreasonable piles of fraud. To meet community expectations and deliver the economic impact required, it was critical that relief was delivered efficiently and quickly. Starting with bushfire support, we knew that we needed to deliver these payments in a streamlined and pathetic way. Our customers had suffered significantly through these fires and we needed to find a way to deliver these programmes that did not require in-person visits to service centres at the expense of customer safety or recognising that individuals had lost essential paperwork as part of the fires that would impact their ability to prove eligibility. We also acknowledge that when programmes are delivered in a time of crisis and a business can't afford to wait for support, there will be some elements of delivery that can always have been done better. Whilst we don't shy away from this, the bushfire grants were among the first of the scale and intensity that Service New South Wales has delivered. And as soon as fraud was identified in the grants, we mobilised a task force to identify and address vulnerabilities in our incoming processes. We've since enhanced our fraud controls. We've introduced a sophisticated triage process which is supported by various technology initiatives, automation and upwards, including new data analytics for detection solutions. We've worked with other state and federal agencies to improve access to data and intelligence sources. We also have a dedicated internal team to manage suspected cases of fraud, who work with external law enforcement agencies to investigate cross fraud. And there have been 74 arrests to date as a consequence. But we're going in an independent view carried out by the Audit Office. We're prioritising the work needed to address their recommendations and we're nearing the closure of recommendations that sit with Service New South Wales and are on track to deliver by the end of 2021 as part of the commitment. We do acknowledge however, that fraud cannot be fully eliminated from these programmes. The Association of Certified Fraud Examiners in its 2020 report to the nations revealed that the median percentage loss of annual revenue from fraud is 5%, while the UK government's Counter Fraud Centre of Expertise estimates public sector fraud and error loss at between 0.5% to 5% of government spending. We know that governments, financial institutions and insurance companies across the globe all grapple with these same issues. I believe we've delivered important outcomes for people, businesses and communities across New South Wales through these difficult times. Our suspected fraud rate on average stands today at 0.23% of monies paid across all programmes and sits well within those international standards. We will continue to buy our energy to looking forward and fine tuning our processes and systems, knowing that fraud is a constant and inherent risk associated with all these programmes. Before closing, I would like to acknowledge the contribution and the commitment of all members of our team and the partner agencies to deliver these programmes under extraordinarily challenging circumstances. Thanks for the opportunity to address the committee report.
Thanks very much, Mr Reese. Does that complete the opening statements from the agencies? Well, the assumption of that, I'll hand over to the opposition now to commence questioning.
Thanks very much, Mr Chair. Can I begin with a question to Mr Brady?
I'm sorry, I can't hear the speaker.
Courtney, you are coming through quite quietly, so either speak up or move closer to the microphone.
Is that, is that better? Is that too quiet still?
You're still unnaturally quiet, Courtney, but you're coming through relatively clearly.
Try my other. Um, is that one better?
It's better.
Yes, that is better.
Yeah, okay, great, all right. Go with that. Um, thanks very much for your time. To all the witnesses, can you hear me? Yes, great, excellent, okay. Mr Brady, can you explain why a staff member used their Service New South Wales email address to apply for a grant under the bushfire programme 55 times, which was valued at over $700,000?
Mrs, I might need to refer that to Mr Reese, who's the Chief Executive of Service New South Wales and would have had oversight of responding to that, that issue.
Thank you, I'm happy to answer the question. To the best of my knowledge, we've had three examples of, of suspected where a question around internal fraud has been raised. I think the example you're giving is one of those three. Two of them have been fully investigated and found to not have any basis and the third one is ongoing. If I'm not mistaken, the example you're referring to relates to a, one of our customer service staff who was actually assisting customers with their applications. And so it's an example of a customer, of one of our team members not following the process correctly.
I'm sorry, Mr Reese, can you just speak up a little bit, please?
Let me just try headphones and see if that's better for everyone.
Eddie, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So I might just quickly start again, if that's okay. So to my knowledge, we've had three examples where questions have been raised around potential matters of internal fraud across these programmes. I believe the example that you're referring to is one of those three examples. Two of those three have been fully investigated and found to have no basis for fraud. The third one, the investigation is, is ongoing. If you're referring to the example, I believe you are, that example was found to be a customer service team member who was attempting to help customers with their applications incorrectly and inappropriately used their own email address in an effort to assist customers who were struggling to put these applications through themselves. So it was an example of procedures not being followed, but it was not an example of any internal fraud attempted or committed.
So that was the, that was the one that it was determined to be an unsanctioned process rather than fraudulent conduct, is that correct?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Okay. And can you just provide some more information about the ongoing investigation? How many applications were lodged with that, particularly with that particular investigation?
I don't have that detail to hand, I'll need to take that question on notice.
Okay, can you tell me how many applications and what was the total value of those applications?
Relating to that case that's currently under investigation?
That's correct.
I, I don't have that information available, I'll take that question on notice.
Okay, can you provide us with any further information? The Service New South Wales employee completed the applications, is that correct? The Service New South Wales, can you just provide us with some more information on that investigation, on that case?
So I don't have information available to me on the case that's currently under investigation. Are you seeking extra information there or on the example that you referred to in your first question?
No, I'm asking you about the case that is still under investigation. Is it correct that there was a Service New South, so there is, there was a total of three Service New South Wales employees who were under investigation, is that correct?
Two of those investigations have completed, that's right, and the third is currently being investigated.
Okay, all right. If you could provide us with some more details on notice with what was the reason, what was the reason that the investigation was initiated? And what was the, and was that as a result of identification by Service New South Wales or by an external agency?
I'm happy to take that on notice, thank you.
Can you also tell us how long that's been under investigation for?
Of course.
Excellent, okay. I'll pass to my colleague, Mr Graham.
I might continue questions to Mr Reese. I'll refer firstly to the letter you wrote on behalf of Service New South Wales through the committee via the Chair earlier in the year. I believe it came to us around the first or second of June. Firstly, thank you for that correspondence. I thought it was actually quite a helpful example of a government agency interacting with these committees, not just providing, for example, papers in response to a call to papers, but providing some information to the committee. So thank you for that. In that correspondence, you indicate that as at the 28th of April 2021, there was a current projected fraud exposure of $11.16 million across the full list of grants and outward payment programmes. Although you observe that this number has not remained static, what is that number as of today?
Thank you for the question, Mr Graham, and thank you for the feedback on the letter. So the equivalent of that number has, has grown. It is currently 16.23 million. So just to, just to confirm, that's the total value of the applications that we suspect have fraud associated with them that have in fact been paid. We have an additional level of fraud that we have, I suspected and prevented prior to payment that is not reflected in that number.
Understood, yeah. Okay, thank you for that update. I might also ask you to...
Sorry, Mr Graham, if I could add one more point of clarification. That 16.23 million is across the, the full suite of programmes that Service New South Wales is currently administering, which would have grown since the letter that you referred to. There's, there's, so this 16.23 actually covers 16 programmes in total.
16 programmes, great, thank you. In, at the time you wrote to the committee, the total full-time equivalent staff for the fraud response team consisted, comprising the fraud triage and the law enforcement liaison teams with 10.5 FTE. What is that number today?
So we, we have, at the moment, we have about 374 people working on grants assessment and fraud. But if I, if I maybe narrow that down, because the majority of that effort goes into the assessment of in-flight programmes, we have a number of teams in this space. So we have a fraud assessment and intelligence team which has seven, seven FTE. We have a fraud response team which includes the team that prepare the, the briefs and liaise with law enforcement. We have 25 people, 25 FTE working there. We have a team that's looking at the end-to-end outward payments, processes, policies, risk management systems, et cetera, for continuous improvement. We have seven people dedicated to that. We have three people continuing to work on the fraud control framework or the outward payment control framework, which is one of the items in the Audit Office recommendations. And we have two people working in the policy space across this, across this area.
Right, thank you. And could you also update us on the number of inbound and outbound referrals? So the, for example, the total inbound referrals referred from New South Wales Police to the 28th of April was 67. What is that number now?
So if you just bear with me for a second, the, the total, the total number of cases that we have now referred to police is 143.
That's referred to police, yeah.
That's correct.
What's the total inbound referrals received from police?
I'll, I'll, I'll give you a, a part answer if that's helpful, Mr Graham, that I'm happy to keep sort of, there's a lot of data in this space as you'd, as you'd appreciate. So for the period of the first of February to the 28th of April, there was 67 inbound.
Correct.
But let me, let me keep working to find what the current level of total inbound is that goes, yeah, let me, let me try and get that for you this session, otherwise I'll take that on notice.
Yeah, and essentially, what I'd like to know is you gave us in that letter, an indication of inbound referrals from police or inbound police requests in relation to persons of interest. There was also a number for then, applications received went to the fraud triage team for New South Wales Police referral, so inbound and what I understood to be outbound referrals. I've wanted up to date figures for those.
That's correct, okay.
Okay.
Let me, let me get that breakdown for you.
Great, and then finally, in relation to this letter, you gave us a number and a dollar value for paid level three applications in relation to fraud exposure. That number at the time was 100, was 1195, a total of just more than $11 million. What is that number today?
Sir, can you just quickly repeat that last data point, Mr Graham?
It was the 1195 applications, this was the number and then also the value of the paid level three applications, that is, ones where there was fraud exposure.
So I, I believe that's the 16.23 million figure I got.
Right, okay.
So that's, that's the amount, that's the amount paid where we suspect there's fraud. But it's not yet, all of that has not yet gone through the courts. So, so of that number, the value of that is 16.23 million. That represents 2,347 separate applications, applications.
And you also gave us the number and the value of applications where a fraud conviction had been recorded. What is that number today? Was previously 46?
So I presume 46 refers to the number of arrests. So there has been 74 arrests that the, for convictions with, there's been convictions relating to 33 individuals, 212 applications for a value of $2.61 million.
$2.61 million. This, you told us that that had previously been where a fraud conviction has been recorded, 46 in total, a number of applications where a fraud conviction has been recorded.
Okay, so, so if that refers to applications, that number is now 212.
212 applications now where fraud has been recorded. And what's the dollar value?
2.61 million.
Yes, good, okay, thank you. All right, thanks for working through that, that's useful.
So can I just ask one follow-up to that, which is of that $2.61 million, how much of that's been recouped, Mr Reese?
So we, we have recovered $2.3 million of funds in total for, that represents 402 applications. There will be a partial overlap between that and the amount that relates to convictions for fraud. There's, there's a number of reasons where we will recoup funds. You know, some is where customers will seek to voluntarily return that, some is where we're following up on an aspect of compliance and eligibility. And then where there is convictions, we seek court orders to ensure that, that, that government is compensated and recovers, that recovered those funds. Of the, of the $2.61 million worth of convictions, we have requested $981,000 worth of compensation orders and the courts have issued $257,900 worth of compensation orders so far.
Are you able to provide us with a figure of the $2.61 million, how much of that has actually been recouped? Like I understand you're saying 2.3 has been recouped across the board of the $16.23 million that has been identified. Are you able to provide us with a breakdown of that $2.61 million?
Yeah, let me, let me take that on notice so I don't inadvertently give you the wrong figure, but, but yes, happy to provide that.
Okay, thanks, I'll pass back to my colleague.
Right, thank you. One of the concerns when this contract was moved from Core Integrity and brought into Service New South Wales for the fraud management team, was that the model that was adopted, the model that was recommended would investigate inbound police inquiries only. Looking at those figures, in fact, you've also ended up referring some applications for fraud outbound to police, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's correct, Mr Graham. So, so we've, we've referred 143 cases in total. 34 of those were referred prior to the transition of those responsibilities from Core Integrity to the internal team. The remaining 109 have been referred after that transition. And of that 109, there, there is a significant number and a significant increase in the number and percentage of outbound referrals compared to the inbound referrals.
But one of the concerns here at the time, and this is coming from documents that were reduced to the parliament, was that the model that you were adopting might really see inbound police inquiries only dealt with. The advantage was it'd be much cheaper, it'd be a lean team, very inexpensive to service. But the risks identified included that applications prioritised as P3 and C4 will not be actioned, meaning that investigation and potential criminal action will not be taken against these suspected fraudulent payments. And secondly, that inaction on these cases could result in negative public and partner agency perceptions. Those numbers you've given us, Mr Reese, are still very low for the number of outbound referrals. You're getting a lot of inquiries from police, but very few relatively, I would have thought, outbound referrals. Is that still a risk here that we're relying more on waiting for the police to call than proactively referring these cases to police?
Yeah, no, I can understand the, the question. So we, we have in, in fact increased our rate of outbound referrals to police. To the best of my knowledge, when we had contract, at the time we contracted Core Integrity for this function, the vast majority of cases referred to police were as a response to inbound requests from police. I, I believe there may have been one of those 34 that was actually an outbound request that had been initiated through the work of Core Integrity. My understanding is now, since transition, there's been a further 50 outbound referrals. So it does represent a significant increase in, in that outbound referral rate. I, I think to your, to your observation on the numbers, there's a, there's a long lead time here, there's a significant amount of work that goes into both the analytics, there's a, a process we need to go through with our customers to ensure fair process and that we're not misinterpreting or taking...
What you're telling us though, is outbound referrals have dropped from the time that Core Integrity was dealing with this. Accepting that though, what you're telling us though is outbound referrals have dropped from the time that Core Integrity was dealing with this programme. They're lower now, a hundred and forty three then, a hundred and nine now, if I've understood what you've said.
No, the, the other way around. So, so in total, we've referred a hundred and forty three cases.
Right, of which a hundred and nine have now been since that period.
So, so a hundred and forty three cases, thirty four of which when Core Integrity were here, a hundred and nine since then. And of the hundred and nine, of the hundred and nine, I believe fifty of those, uh, were outbound referrals.
Which still seems very low. Do you have a view on that?
Uh, there, there is a long lead time to get to the point where we make that referral to police. There's a significant amount of work that goes into preparing, to, to getting to that conclusion and preparing the, uh, the evidence packs that, that support that. So that work will, uh, will continue.
Uh, I might hand to my colleague after this question, what number of, um, uh, you have a pipeline then of, um, evidence packs in process, what do you anticipate that number will be, say by the end of the year? Or a timeline of your choosing where is that heading fifty now? Where will you be at, uh, by the end of the year?
Yeah, I, I need to take that question on notice, Mr Graham.
Thank you.
Just one more question before our time expires. Can I just ask you, you gave us the figure of seventy four arrests, thirty three individuals convicted of fraud, how many charges have been made?
Yeah, I don't, I don't appear to have that data point with me, apologies. I'll take that question on notice and revert.
Okay, then can I just ask one final question in a, um, the House folder note, uh, that was provided to the parliament, um, said that the total maximum forecast of grant exposure was twenty six point six nine million dollars. You've revised that down now to sixteen point two three, is that correct?
So, so the sixteen point two, sixteen point two three million is our, um, is our current view of suspected fraud that has been successful, monies have been paid. There is a, you know, separate, separate to that, there's a, uh, a different level of attempted fraud. We believe that currently sits at approximately forty million dollars. So this is where we believe there have been attempts to defraud, but those attempts have been blocked before payment has been made. Uh, and we do have a further fifteen million dollars of attempted fraud that we are currently triaging to work out whether it's, uh, to either confirm it as suspected attempted fraud or to move forward as, um, where, where payment's alleged about.
Sorry.
Thanks Courtney, we, we can come back to this. Well, Mr Race, it actually might be useful to get some further clarification about that. You say that there's forty million dollars of prevented fraud? Is, is that your best estimate at the moment?
Sus- suspected prevented fraud, that's correct.
So where there has been a suspicion of fraud and the payment in the application and the payment has, has not been made because of the suspicion of fraud, is that right?
That's correct.
And on top of that is the sixteen point two three million dollars of, I, of at least internally confirmed fraud where money has been paid.
That's correct.
And, um, in total, some two point three million dollars has been recovered, is that right?
So, so we've recovered two point nine three million, but we need to be careful that, that, that will sit across a range of uh, a range of different cases. Some of those will sit within our suspected fraud sixteen point, sixteen point two three million, some of that will sit without, so I don't want to, I don't want to directly align those.
So you've recovered money where you don't suspect fraud?
So, so that, that, that's right. So, um, where, where we have compliance related follow ups with customers, confirming various aspects of, uh, eligibility and compliance with terms and conditions, we also see funds, uh, returned through that process.
So if you, that, that would be in circumstances where there may have been an error in the application or a misunderstanding, but non-intent fraud, is that, to, to commit fraud, right?
That's correct.
What, what's the value of that class of payments made in error or made, made but later found to not have been an entitlement, but not fraud?
So we, so we have a range of different, um, audits underway, looking at different aspects of compliance and eligibility for the programme. We, we're currently, uh, we currently have approximately four million dollars worth of applications where we have a view that, um, customers were potentially not eligible and will be seeking, uh, seeking to reclaim those funds.
So.
And then there's a, and then there's a, a range of applications where, uh, where that analysis is ongoing.
So in terms of fraud, um, either prevented or identified fraud, you've got roughly around about fifty six million dollars worth of applications that fall in that bucket, is that right?
Yes, sixteen point two three paid, the remaining forty prevented, that's correct.
How many applications does that represent, do you know?
So the sixteen point two three million represents two thousand three hundred and forty seven applications. The forty million of prevented fraud represents four thousand one hundred and seventy five applications. Uh, and I think I may have mentioned earlier, there, there's another fifteen million dollars worth of uh, applications that we're currently working through to either, uh, confirm and move them into suspected fraud or to, um, to move them through to payment. Uh, there's four thousand six hundred and sixty nine applications in that category as well.
So there's, um, six and a half thousand identified applications involving fraud and another four and a half thousand where you have suspicions and you're working through, is that right?
So there's two, apologies if I'm sort of being too detailed here, two, two thousand three hundred and forty seven where we suspect fraud has occurred. There are four thousand one hundred and seventy five where we suspect that attempted fraud has occurred, but that was not successful and did not get paid.
So I've added those together, Mr Race, and I come to a bit over six and a half thousand. So six and a half thousand cases where you have either identified fraud or you, um, or you have, you've identified actual fraud or you've identified an attempted fraud and prevented payments, about six and a half thousand applications.
That's, that's.
And then there's another four and a half thousand that are in a bucket that you have suspicions about and you're undertaking investigations on, is that right?
That's correct.
All right, so around about eleven thousand applications in total.
Correct.
And how many applications have you referred to police outbound?
So one thousand, what's, so one thousand five hundred and three applications, um, have currently been referred to police. But I don't have, uh, a split of that between those that resulted from an inbound request for police versus those that are associated with an outbound referral from Service New South Wales. I'm happy to take that question on notice and provide that split.
But you were giving numbers to Mr Graham about outbound referrals. Can you refresh my, what, what the numbers you know about outbound referrals are, they're ones coming from Service New South Wales?
So that was referring to the number of cases of that, of that hundred and forty three, since responsibility for that analysis transition from Core Integrity to the internal team. I believe fifty of that hundred and forty three or fifty of the hundred and nine that have been processed since that tran- point of transition, uh, are outbound cases. But a case can relate to multiple applications, multiple individuals, of course.
Yeah, you, you see, Mr Race, I mean, assuming that in total, one thousand five hundred applications have been referred to police. We've got six and a half thousand applications where you've identified actual or attempted fraud. That seems to me the bulk of people are going to get away with it, is that right?
No, I don't believe that's right. So as I flagged before, there's a long lead time for working through this process and preparing the briefs and making those referrals to police. We're continuing to, uh, to undertake that work in parallel with the other things that, uh, that we're doing.
Well, can you identify how many individuals you think are associated with the sixteen point two three million dollars of identified paid fraud, how many cases that is?
I don't have the number of individuals that we believe that two thousand three hundred and forty seven applications relates to, but I can take that question on notice.
And can you identify, if you can, and I, I thank you for that, Mr Race, can you identify if you can the number of individuals associated with the forty million dollars of prevented fraud?
So unfortunately I have the number of applications, but not, again, not the number of individuals that relates to, but I'm happy to take that on notice.
Yeah, Mr Race, there's no criticism of you. You've come armed with a, a variety of useful information and I accept that some things will be taken on notice. Could I, could I then ask you about, um, you say this is quite a labour intensive process, is it, to identify fraud?
Uh, it is.
Yeah, um, would it be true that the key to identifying success, the key to the successful identification of potential fraudulent grant applications is the ability to identify all associated grant applications tied to the fraudulent one? That's critical, isn't it?
There was cer- certainly, if, if your question is, you know, is the relationship between applications part of, uh, the analysis that goes into detecting fraud, the answer is yes.
Well, that would be looking at other applications that share common characteristics, names, addresses, email addresses, phone numbers, bank account details, is that right?
That's correct, that's correct.
How is that currently being undertaken by Service New South Wales?
So we, we have a, so, so this is all managed as part of our fraud control framework, which is really a combination of our policies, our processes, our data and our systems, uh, and the teams that underpin that. We have a, specifically to that analysis, we have a range of technologies involved. Some of the controls and the, um, and the, uh, the analytics is built into our digital product set. We have a data warehouse that underpins a lot of the analysis. Uh, we have a custom, uh, a, a, um, we have a, uh, a tool that we're introducing, uh, called Quantexa, which is a purpose-built, uh, risk analytics tool that's, that particularly focuses on, uh, relationship management between different data sources and different entities.
Did you say you were building this tool called Quantexa?
No, Qu- no, Quantexa is a third party product. We're in the process of, uh, running that in parallel with our existing analytics processes whilst we build confidence in it and ensure that we're getting accurate response. So then it will play a, uh, an ongoing role in that analytical capability.
So it's not in place yet?
It, it is, it is in place. It's being used in parallel rather than in place of our current processes.
Well, when was it put in place?
It was first introduced, uh, I think, uh, within the last one to two months.
And how many fraudulent applications, additional fraudulent applications has it identified?
So we, we are continuing to maintain our current systems and our processes. And so we're using this tool in parallel with those to get confidence on the recommendations that it gives us before we, uh, move completely to it. So I think it would be, uh, I don't think it would be accurate to say that that tool is the result of our recommendations at this point. It is an additional, uh, source of, um, it's an additional tool that we use to give us greater confidence around uh, our processes and our recommendations.
So what are you using at the moment to identify fraud? What, what programme are you using?
Uh, so we.
Data matching programme?
So we have a range of technologies, that the data itself is all brought together in, uh, an underlying data warehouse. And then we have a range of analytical tools that we use, uh, over the top of that to assist in the analysis that we, that we undertake.
What are those tools?
The principal tool that we use is a tool called Tableau.
When was that put in place to be, isn't it? When was that put in place to be undertaking this role of analysing the data?
Tableau is a data visualisation, uh, and analytics tool. So it's a tool that Service New South Wales has used extensively for a long time and predates our, uh, predates the grants programmes that we're speaking about.
So was that in place when the initial ten thousand dollar bushfire grants, the ones which are the largest degree of fraud associated, was that in place at that time?
So the product itself was in use, um, at Service New South Wales at that time. Its application to grants has been, uh, you know, uh, has changed over time. But certainly when we need to perform data analytics, that is the tool that our, uh, our team will use to perform that.
What about, um, for the volunteer, so sorry, when was it first used to do the data analysis on the ten thousand dollar bushfire grants, the ones with the largest degree of fraud?
Uh, I'd, I'd need to take the date on notice, Mr Shipbridge.
What about for the volunteer, um, firefighter fund? When was it first used on that?
In terms of the date, I'd need to take that on notice.
You see, Mr Race, when those schemes were first set up, there was really no systemic fraud control, was there? You had none, really?
So, so at the time that the first programmes mobilised, we, we had significant, um, fraud controls across the organisation, but certainly outbound payments of that nature and that scale was a new area of focus and activity for Service New South Wales. So we did need to build those controls and mature those controls in parallel with the delivery of those programmes.
Mr Race, you had, there were regular reports being made, um, through indeed to Service New South Wales, both before and after the establishment of the Strategic Investigation Unit, which identified applications, people making northward of two hundred individual applications under these grant programmes, weren't there?
That is correct.
So, you know, one example, um, was a, a, um, a person of interest whose surname begins with R, um, who made more than two hundred applications with an associated value of more than two million dollars, um, um, for using a hundred different user IDs. Can you explain how on earth the system allowed one person to generate a hundred user IDs and make two hundred applications to get two million dollars? How on earth did that happen?
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a great question. So, so maybe two parts to the response. The, the first is the particular case you're referring to. It's a good example where, uh, you've got to be very careful of the false positives in this space as well. So, uh, the end result of the analysis on that case, uh, ultimately resulted in, uh, uh, ultimately showed that there were two cases of successful, uh, fraud, uh, relating to that, uh, for ten thousand dollars each. So, uh, there was the, the, the risk in this space and certainly, uh, towards the start of these programmes, when you're trying to understand risk, there is both that risk that things are missed, but also the risk that false positives are included. I think it's a, it's a, that, that case is a prime example, uh, prime example of that.
Two cases of successful fraud, how many attempts at, how many unsuccessful attempts of fraud were there?
Significantly less than, uh, originally thought. I don't have the number, uh, the number to hand. I'm happy to take that on, that on notice.
What about the, um, person of interest beginning with P? Again, eighty seven applications with an associated value of eight hundred and sixty three thousand dollars generated from twelve different user IDs. How did that happen?
Uh, I'm not familiar with that particular case, but I'm happy to take that question on notice.
Well, person of interest beginning with A, um, fifty six applications to an associated value of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars generated from thirteen different user IDs.
So, so again, all of, all of those cases you're referring to are point in time analysis that has moved on significantly. I'm happy to provide, provide an update on those, uh, on those cases, but I'd need to take that on notice.
Well, let's be clear, there was no data matching at all in place, was there, when these programmes were set up? The, the ten thousand dollar bushfire grants, there was no data matching, systemic data matching in place at all, was there?
That's not correct. So, so the programmes, firstly to start with, the programmes have a range of controls that range from the deterrents that are in place, uh, the front end controls of the applications that prevent certain applications being submitted in the first place. Uh, and we then have a range of steps applications go through. We run analytics over those applications to identify potential markers for fraud. There's a security, uh, inspection that's then done on those applications. There's a business verification done on those applications. Applications that are still deemed to be likely to fraud are then moved back to our fraud analytics team. And those confirmed as suspected fraud are ultimately briefed up and passed to police. All of those controls, uh, and, and then post the programme, the post-programme compliance controls, they, they all play a role in managing risk. When we deliver the, the, the volunteer firefighter funds, absolutely those controls, uh, in many areas were new. They have continued to mature over the delivery of, uh, all of our programmes and each programme picks up on the controls before. Uh, and where we find, uh, new areas of exposure or risk, we can reapply. And where we find new areas of exposure or risk, we can reapply that analytics back to, back to previous programs. The fire, the programs you referred to in terms of the bushfire programs, there was a level of analytics that was in place at that time. It was not of the scale and industrialization that we have today or that we'll get going forward through the new tool that we've put in place. But there was a level of analytics at the time.
Mr. Reese, the level of analytics at the time was a poor bloke called Richard King, who had a spreadsheet where he extracted data from your Salesforce database and tried to do the, do the best he could with an Excel spreadsheet. That's the truth of it, isn't it? Poor old Mr. King with a spreadsheet, trying to cover thousands and thousands of applications.
That, that is, that is part of it, yes.
That was it. Some poor bloke with an Excel spreadsheet, trying to pull together data from the Salesforce thing and trying to make connections using an Excel spreadsheet. That was it.
So there was, so there was a period of time at the mobilization of these programs where the analytics needed to be undertaken largely manually. We didn't have a sophisticated toolset at the time. That's the work that's been taking place over the last eighteen months to build that out in parallel with the delivery of the grants. The, the, the grants programs ultimately show that we were able to maintain a very low level of paid fraudulent applications in spite of the need to mature those processes and those capabilities in parallel with the delivery of, of that support.
Mr. Reese, was the primary fraud identification measure that was in place when these hundred million dollar grant programs were being rolled out? One employee with an Excel spreadsheet, trying to do the best he can identifying connections. Was that the primary?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't believe that's an accurate statement, Mr. Shipbridge.
Well, you, you, you engaged an external expert to assist you with this in the form of core integrity, didn't you?
We, we did. We also had other internal teams that played a role in this. So Mr. King, as you referred to, certainly did play a role, particularly towards the early stages of these programs. But we rapidly brought in a range of support measures and continued to improve those controls and to industrialize those controls.
Mr. King played an heroic role as the, basically the thin, the thin blue line protecting public money from fraudulent applications, didn't he? Apart from Mr. King, when these programs were set up, what were the other fraud prevention measures you had in place?
So, so Mr. King did play an important role, but he was one of a number of people working in this space.
Well, apart from Mr. King's spreadsheet, what were the other fraud prevention controls you had in place when they were rolled out?
So when each of the programs delivered, there was controls that were part of the front-end application process that complemented the backend checks that Mr. King was, was doing at the time.
We, we might come back to this, Mr. Reese. Unfortunately, my time has expired. I'll hand it back to the opposition.
Right, thank you, Chair. Mr. Reese, I might just have one more attempt to, thank you for all the data you've given us. But I might just have one more attempt at summarizing that, those totals there. You've told us that, that total of eleven, eleven thousand applications are in question, that is suspected fraud, attempted and prevented fraud or further investigation. And I believe the total number you've given us, that is the total value, is just over sixty million dollars. That is the slightly over sixteen million for suspected, attempted and prevented, forty million dollars and further investigation, fifteen million, leading to just over sixty million dollars. Is that correct?
When I add those numbers, I get a slightly higher figure than you're referring to, Mr. Graham, but, but.
A little bit higher. It's over sixty. And in, so eleven thousand applications, sixty-one million dollars, you're going to take on notice the number of applications that you've referred outbound and the value. But the total number of cases you've referred outbound since the twenty-fourth of February this year, since Service New South Wales took this over, is fifty.
Fifty, fifty cases, yes, not fifty applications, yeah.
More applications, I accept that, but eleven thousand applications potentially in the mix here and fifty outbound cases with being referred to police. And you'll come back to us with the number of applications. That's correct, isn't it?
That's correct.
Thank you. I'll hand to my colleague.
Thanks very much. I just wanted to ask about, come back just briefly to this question of the ongoing investigation of a current employee of Service New South Wales. Does that person remain in the employ of Service New South Wales?
I, I believe so, Miss Hughes, but I'd need to, I think to confirm. They, they certainly, that, that investigation's ongoing. So if they're not part of Service New South Wales, it would certainly have nothing to do with, with that investigation.
And so is that investigation in relation to fraudulent activity?
So I believe we're running that investigation into response to concerns that were raised.
Okay, and who raised those concerns?
I'd need to take that on notice.
And can you then provide an outline of what the investigation is in relation to?
I'll take that on notice.
Okay. And are you able to then tell us if that person is still on full pay within Service New South Wales? Or whether they've been stood down from their duties?
I'll take that on notice.
Okay, thanks very much. I know that you, we, you, we talked about the amount of money that's been recouped or you, we've got a figure of two point three million dollars in total that's been recouped, is that correct?
Two point nine three.
Two point nine three. Now, some of that, though, was incorrect, incorrectly, not fraudulently applied for, is that correct?
Yeah, there's, there's principally three categories of applic- of applications that will make up that two point nine three million. Some of them are incorrect payments that have been returned, some of them are voluntary returns from customers, and some of them relate to fraudulent payments.
Okay. And do you have a breakdown of those with you?
So I believe the funds recovered relating to fraudulent payments is forty thousand three hundred and fifty, recognizing that a number of those court cases have only recently concluded and the associated compensation orders.
Sorry. So your evidence is now that actually the amount of money from fraudulent applications that's been recovered is forty thousand dollars. Is that correct?
To the best of my knowledge, the funds recover, recovered from fraudulent payments are forty thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, and how much from incorrect payments?
I don't have that, that split. I'll take that on notice.
Take that on notice? And how about, how many voluntary returns?
Similar.
Okay, and of that, of that forty thousand dollars, that is out of a total of, we've talked about a grant, a total figure of fifty-six point two three million dollars, being sixteen point two three million dollars, the total value of the applications that have been found to have been fraudulently applied and forty million dollars of additional amounts, is that right? So out of that total of fifty-six point two three million dollars of fraudulently or suspected fraudulently, sorry, of fraudulently paid out or attempted paid out money. No, so it's, it's of the sixteen million dollars, yes?
So maybe if I can try and assist, so that, so there's sixteen point two three million where we suspect fraud has taken place and been paid. Of that sixteen point two three million, we have made referrals to the police for five million dollars worth of total value. So five million of the sixteen point two three million. The funds that have been recovered relating to fraud currently sits at forty thousand three hundred and fifty.
Okay, so it's forty thousand dollars of the sixteen point two three million then.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's not very much, Mr. Reese.
It's, unfortunately, it's a very slow process. As I did flag, we do seek compensation orders wherever a conviction has been made. The, the value of those compensation orders sit at just under a million dollars requested and six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars granted. So we will continue to make those referrals. We'll continue to seek those compensation orders. We have certainly evolved the, the way that we approach the delivery of grants. The more, the more recent grants are delivered as active grace payments and Revenue New South Wales performs the compliance and funds recovery role there by making those as active grace payments. It gives government additional options to use the powers of Revenue New South Wales for recovery of funds. So we'll continue to use a, a range of mechanisms to ensure that funds are returned where, where appropriate.
So just to clarify, Mr. Reese, this is my last question before I hand back to my colleague. You're saying now Revenue New South Wales is able to recoup that money because they weren't able to previously. That's correct, isn't it?
Because, yes, because the, because recent grants have been mobilized as active grace payments, that provides additional ability to leverage the powers of Revenue New South Wales. There are mechanisms-
Sorry, Mr. Reese, we're just, we're running out of time, so I'm just going to ask of the sixteen point two three million dollars, that money is not able to be recovered by the State Debt Recovery Office, is that correct?
So a portion of that would not have been delivered as active grace payments and therefore can't leverage those powers. But there are other mechanisms to seek the recoup of those funds.
Thanks very much, Mr. Reese. I'm going to pass back to my colleague.
Thank you for that. So just continue on the question. I wanted to ask about the way that these applications are prioritized. I'm looking here at the Strategic Investigations Unit Priority Matrix, which was worked up with Service New South Wales. So I understand this was their process, but it was worked up with Service New South Wales. The version I'm looking at is version seven, so it clearly had evolved somewhat. One of the criteria for deciding whether these are high priority or low priority cases is media exposure. That is whether or not there's a high potential of level of media interest, some media interest or, you know, perhaps the media isn't interested at all, in which case Service New South Wales isn't interested either. Do you believe it's appropriate, Mr. Reese, that cases of fraud should be prioritized purely on whether they've hit the media or not?
Personally, no, I don't. I'm, I'm not familiar with the document you're looking at, Mr. Graham, but, but personally, no, I don't.
Yeah, this was provided to the Parliament. It was, this particular version, version seven, was current on the eleventh of September twenty twenty. One of the other criteria is customer impact. One of the questions is, is the customer aware? And it's a high-risk matter, and then it's a high priority. If the customer's not aware, it's a low priority. Does that seem appropriate as a way of prioritizing these cases? Isn't that the absolute wrong way around? If the customer's not aware, doesn't that make it more dangerous here?
Yeah, I, I, I must confess, I'm not quite sure how I would interpret what you've, what you've just said. Certainly, our, we, we do have some prioritization. We, we prioritize cases where funds are, you know, funds are paid. We place a higher priority on that than where we've successfully blocked, blocked fraud. We do look at the complexity of the case and our ability to prepare a brief that we believe will, will stand scrutiny.
Are you still regarding them as high priority or more high priority if there's a Freedom of Information request or a ministerial letter, some ministerial correspondence value? Does this make it more high risk from a Service New South Wales point of view?
Not, not from my perspective, and I'm not aware that that is a criteria on which we're prioritizing our efforts.
Well, that was the criteria you're prioritizing on the eleventh of September. But you're telling us that's now no longer the case.
I, I'm not familiar with the document you're referring to, so I'd need to, I need to take that question on notice, Mr. Graham. But to the best of my knowledge, that's not a part of the criteria by which that team prioritizes their work.
At the moment, when you prioritize cases, is one of the criteria whether the victim or the person of interest is of note. That was the criteria on the eleventh of September. Is it still the case that if you're a person of note, you are a high priority, but if you're not, Service New South Wales doesn't consider your case a priority?
Not, not, not that I'm aware.
Isn't that an appalling criteria to be, for a government department that should treat every citizen equally to be applying for whether your case is a high priority or not, Mr. Reese?
I would, I would support that view. I'm not aware of that. I'm not familiar with the document you're referring to. And I've seen no indication that those criteria are used to prioritize the, the work that our team undertakes. But I'm, I'm happy to, to look into that.
Well, these were all criteria you were applying in version seven of the priorities for how these applications were assessed last year. If you could take on notice, whether that is still the case and what the criteria are now for deciding what is a high priority and a low priority case, that'd be appreciated.
Of course.
Had you finished on that, John? Mr. Reese, if you've recovered slightly over forty thousand dollars of the sixteen point two three million dollars of identified fraud payments, that, that's right, is it? That's-
I, I believe so, Mr. Shipbridge.
Mr. Reese, that's less than a quarter of one percent of the payments having been recovered. Do you agree with that?
I haven't done that maths, but I'll, I'll trust yours.
Well, I just did. That's taken a bit over a year to get to this point, is that right?
That's correct.
So you should be sorted in about, I make it four hundred years. You should actually have this sorted by, in four hundred years' time, if you continue at this rate. Would that be right?
I don't, there, there is a lead time to this process, so I don't think it'd be appropriate to just- It is, it is, it is material, but you need to remember that, that, that time allows also for these, these cases to be seen by the courts and determined by the courts.
Mr. Reese, four hundred years allows a lot of time for the courts to look at this. I think you would agree that that's an unacceptable amount of time.
I'd agree four hundred years is a long and unacceptable amount of time, Mr. Shipbridge.
Well, if you continue at your current rate, it'll be four hundred years before you are recovering the sixteen point two three million dollars. That is so far, so far from acceptable in terms of the recovery of public money that I, I don't, I don't understand how anyone can defend it.
So, Mr. Shipbridge, I'm not sure I accept your logic and your extrapolation there. But certainly to the previous question, I'm, I'm happy to take on notice and revert with a projection of what that progress is going to look like by the end of the year to Mr. Graham's question earlier.
I'll take you through the logic. Forty thousand dollars of sixteen point two one million dollars is less than a quarter of one percent. It's taken you a year to recover less than a quarter of one percent. If you continue at that rate, it'll take you four hundred years to recover the money. That's the basic logic, Mr. Reese. So if it's not twenty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-one, which is your deadline, what is the deadline for the recovery of this money?
So I think that logic assumes that there's a linear extrapolation to this. What we have seen is that there is an acceleration to the rate of referrals to police and the volume of applications and dollars associated with that. There is a lead time to the preparation of these, of these briefs. And so I think a simple linear extrapolation, whilst I can appreciate it, I don't think represents the progress that is being made or will be made in that space.
Well, if it's been a nonlinear progression to get to forty thousand dollars, you're still in a world of trouble, aren't you, Mr. Reese? That'd be true. If you're engaging on some sort of curve here, it's not a very attractive outcome, is it?
I, I would like to see an acceleration of those funds recovered, Mr. Shipbridge.
You see, Mr. Reese, it creates a major moral hazard if you have thousands and thousands of people who have fraudulently either sought to obtain or obtained public money and less than a quarter of one percent of those are going to be prosecuted against. You have a major moral hazard here, don't you? It's an invitation to fraud, isn't it?
Look, I, I can only speak to the elements that I can control. What we are seeing is a significant deterrent in these applications. We are seeing a significant improvement in the management of risk. We're seeing a commitment and an acceleration to the consequence management of applications that are, that are deemed fraudulent. I can fully appreciate what you're, what you're saying, but the elements that I can control don't include the elements that, that relate to the courts system. What we are committed to do is continuing to improve those risk controls, continuing to investigate cases of suspected fraud. What we are committed to do is continuing to improve those risk controls, continuing to investigate cases of suspected fraud and continuing to make those referrals to police.
Mr. Reese, going back to what systems were in place last year, I'll, I'll read to you an extract from a document. And it's a long table document, document in the form of a table that was produced by Core Integrity. They said, and I quote, "Core Integrity identified earlier in their, in their engagement that Service New South Wales' ability to undertake this type of analysis, and that's the data matching analysis, was limited, if not non-existent." That was the advice you got from Core Integrity, wasn't it? The chat, a limited, if not non-existent, capacity to do data analysis.
I, I think that was Core Integrity's, if that's, if that's what Core Integrity put in the report, that's their perspective. Doesn't mean we share that perspective. Service New South Wales has a data insights and analytics team and capability. There's a maturity to that capability. The department more broadly holds the Data Analytics Centre and a range of other capabilities. So I believe Core Integrity have drawn that perspective and opinion from a narrow viewpoint.
Well, they went on and they said some attempts had been made in a rudimentary way to perform this type of analysis by Richard King in spreadsheets using data extracts from Salesforce. That was, that was, that was what was in place, isn't it? That's what your own external expert is telling you, poor old Mr. King.
So, so as we said, at the, at the introduction of these programs, a number of these capabilities were, were new. They needed further maturing. We've continued to mature those capabilities and industrialize those capabilities over the life of those, of the life of those programs.
Well, Core Integrity came to you with a solution which you rejected, didn't they? They came with a product that they said would be the best way of identifying fraud and Service New South Wales rejected it, didn't they?
I think you're referring to the network analytics visualization tool that Core Integrity used to deliver the services that we commissioned them for. I think a couple of things, it's important to realize that actually Core Integrity's engagement was about bolstering our capability in this space. The network analysis tool that they're referring to is, is a network analysis tool that is not unique to Core Integrity. It's not unique to the product that they were particularly familiar with. What we've found in practice is those network analysis tools, whilst they are nice from a visualization standpoint, practically become very limited in their use and benefit at scale for the investigations function. We have those capabilities, but we don't find value in them operationally to progress the risk analysis and the, and the case referrals.
Core Integrity were the data or the fraud experts that you brought in, weren't they? They were the external experts you ident, who have a track record of assisting organizations to identify fraud. That's why you brought them in, isn't it?
We did engage them for their expertise in this space. That's correct.
And I'll read to you what they said. "Core Integrity developed their own network association tool using Power BI, P O W E R, capital B I, which they offered to provide to Service New South Wales to use to assist with case referrals. Service New South Wales rejected the offer to use Power BI as it was felt that it could not be supported internally and additional licenses would be required." That's why it was rejected, isn't it? Not because it didn't work, but because you didn't think your systems could stack it up and you didn't want to pay for the licenses.
So, so Power BI is just another reporting tool. It's a Microsoft product. It's the equivalent of Tableau. Both of those products have an ability to deliver visualizations like those that Core Integrity are referring to. The, the, the bigger challenge here, Mr. Shubridge, is the analysis that that was throwing up actually was ultimately proven to be inaccurate. The bigger focus here is on the underlying data integrity and the relationships between that data. The visualization tool is not an important part, not a useful part at scale of analyzing that risk and of making those, making those cases and referrals to police. What we've seen is since that analysis moved from Core Integrity to Service New South Wales, the volume of both, of both in total and, and more importantly, of outbound referrals has increased, not decreased, and we continue to build up our toolset and our data assets to further that exercise.
Is this using Tableau, Tableau, is that right? That's your primary response?
Ta- Tableau is, Tableau is a data analytics and visualization tool in the same way that Microsoft Power BI is. That's correct.
Is that your data analytics tool that Service New South Wales is using?
We use Tableau as our default instead of the Microsoft tool. That's where our skill set lies.
And is it true, as Core Integrity says, that the reason you didn't get Power BI was because Service New South Wales didn't want to pay for the licenses and that it would not be supported with your system?
So maybe a couple of statements. The, the department uses Power BI. The questionary is around where our skill sets are in terms of the use of those tools. I'd need to, I'd need to take on notice the question around whether licensing was part of the consideration on whether to adopt any of the, any of the IP that Core Integrity, Core Integrity had.
Mr. Reese, Core Integrity said in February, and I'll again quote from them. However, multiple assurances were made that a network association tool would be built in Tableau. And then that's the preferred data visualization tool of Service New South Wales. Prior to Service New South Wales embarking on the Fraud Control Framework Initiative, to this date, the Tableau ver, the Tableau version has never been built and funding was not approved. Even in February this year, you hadn't got Tableau up and running. You hadn't got the systems in place. That's right, isn't it?
No, it's not right. So, so Tableau is used. The specific visualization that they're referring to is around network analysis. As I've said to you, the tool, the teams that undertake the analysis found that those network analysis tools were not helpful once they, once we got to a certain scale of analysis. We have that ability to apply those tools. The teams choose not to use them because they do not see value in them and they do not assist in the task.
So what are you using to crunch this large amount of data, to draw the associations together, to link emails, bank accounts, user IDs, if not Tableau, not Power BI? What is the tool you are using?
So, so the data itself and the relationships are all underpinned by our data warehouse. That's, that's the, that's the important asset here, not the visualization tool that you put over the top of it. We happen to use Tableau as our data visualization tool, but it's not the important part of this. The important part of this is the underlying data assets. As I said to you, we're bringing in place a tool.
Sorry, we're running out of time. It's not what's in the warehouse that counts. It's how you analyze what's in the warehouse and draw the links together. And I'll also put this proposition to you, that having not adopted Service, Core Integrity's measure, having been so slow in stacking up Tableau and not having another tool to hand, there's a large amount of fraud that's simply not been identified. There's, there's, there's no systems in place, no effective systems in place to identify the scale of fraud, is there?
That's not correct.
Well, again, what's the program that you're using to draw together to make that data matching? I'm not interested in what's in the warehouse. I'm interested in how you get it out of the warehouse and make it useful.
So that, as I've said to you, that the tool that we use as our primary tool for data analytics is a tool called Tableau.
But you told me that that kind of data visualization wasn't useful.
So, so network analysis is, is simply one way of visualizing data. Many tools can do it. We don't find that way of visualizing data assists the operational tasks that we need to do.
Mr. Reese, I'm still utterly at a loss as to what tool you're using to analyze the data. And I'll put this proposition to you, that not having a tool to analyze the data means that the state government can say, we have modest degrees of fraud, because you're basically not looking. You're not identifying it. You haven't put the resources or the systems in to identify it. So you minimize the level of fraud. Is that what's going on here?
No, it's not.
Well, unfortunately, we have run out of time. I know that the, the government has an opportunity if there's any matters they wish to clarify, so I'll give them that opportunity.
Now, I think it's all been entirely clarified, David. We don't require any time for questions.
All right. Mr. Paulus?